Welcome to the May 2nd, 2017 Planning Board Meeting. I have to announce that we are recording this for purpose of minutes. Elcat is also recording this, and I have to ask if anyone else is. Seeing no one jump up, we are gonna jump right in. We have a 6:00 PM request for waiver of site plan review, Porter Road Pet Care.
Property owner is Porter Road Property Partnership, 5-5 Porter Road, East Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed businesses is Morrissey's Ventures, Inc., DBA Porter Road Pet Care, Inc. Owner of business is Paul Morrissey. Business owner's address is 32 Wad Street, Springfield, Mass. Property address is 141 Porter Road, East Long Metal. Property district is A. Allowed use is no. Proposed hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM every day. Total number of employees, including owner, is 10. Summary of business, pet boarding facility existing, non-conforming. Number of commercial vehicles is not applicable. Amount of product storage, not applicable. The application has been signed and dated April 26, 2017.
So, welcome. I'm assuming you're opposed?
I am.
So exactly, I mean, are you just going to be taking over the business operations and continuing it as it is?
Yes. And we're gonna lease it. We have a five-year lease that we're looking to do with the option to buy within that five years.
Okay. So at this time, you're just looking to continue the operation as it is?
As it is, yep.
Okay. I'll open up to the board. Any questions?
So, nothing about the facility and the site will change?
No. Everything should remain the same.
Cool.
My own comment is, you know, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, so you can't expand it.
Right.
That's one of the things that we had discussions with the previous owner on.
Yep.
Okay.
Pretty much anything, you would have to come back to the board for it. Ty, any questions?
No, I think that's it.
Robin? Nothing?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we are gonna jump into some new business because we're running a little ahead of schedule. How about a request for waiver of site plan review, Go Graphics, 31 Benton Drive?
I've included, Kevin went down there because of the complaint.
Yep.
Not Kevin, I'm sorry, Bob Parent. And gave me all the pictures.
Okay.
Of everything that's being stored there. Excuse me.
Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Whitestone Property Management, LLC. The owner's address is 31 Benton Drive, East Long Metal. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Go Graphics. Owner of business is James W. White and Gary E. Stone. Their addresses are also listed here. Property address is 31 Benton Drive, East Long.
Benton.
Oh, I thought it was Benton, but also it looks like there's two U's in here. Benton Drive, excuse me. Property district is industrial garden park. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are 8 to 5. Number of employees are 13. Date of last parking plan with copy of the same is November 2016. Summary of business operation, temporary storage of fill and equipment. Number of commercial vehicles, three. Amount of product storage is zero. The application's been signed and dated April 26, 2017.
What they're actually looking to do, Baltasar is doing some construction work on Converse Street, and they had approached Go Graphics because of the extended side yard, which is the one we approved, the additional parking area and all on. And Baltasar asked if they could temporarily store some of their material and equipment there and literally work out a deal to where they would be the contractor to put in the parking and all. I guess Jim didn't think it was a problem, and I suggested that he at least submit a waiver of site plan so that we could have a discussion on it, see if we want to have fencing put in around it, maybe silt fence near the road or something.
Restrictive timeframe, possibly.
Exactly.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Go Graphics has put an addition on right now?
Yes.
This can, you're shaking your head no.
It's a DOT project. It's for Long Meadow.
No, 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 no.
Go Graphics is putting an addition on the back of their building.
That's what I'm asking.
That's true.
Okay. So I guess my first question would be, are the two going to conflict with each other? And are they gonna finish sooner? Is the parking gonna become an issue? I guess the obvious questions.
As far as I know, the actual building has already been constructed.
Okay.
In the back. And basically where the gravel area is off to the side, which was off of their asphalt area.
Okay.
Is where the equipment storage and the mounting.
To the left of their building.
So that needs to be their new future parking lot for their addition?
Not a parking lot, it's a gravel drainage area.
It's a drainage area.
They didn't request any actual parking on it.
So no addition?
Which surprised me.
All right, so I guess if we allow it, is it gonna cause, create conflict with the addition that we've already approved? That would be my question. And is it, so you got a complaint, stuff in the road?
Yeah, the road was a mess. Like I said, it's a DOT project for Long Meadow. And Long Meadow didn't want them storing their stuff in Long Meadow, so they came to East Long Meadow. But outside storage in the industrial garden district requires screening from the road. And our DPW has a problem with having to clean up the roads and, I mean, it's, do you want to allow the industrial garden district to use products that are being stored for projects out of town? That's the basic.
So, you said Bob went out, that Bob Parent went out there and took some photographs?
Right, the photographs are there.
And what was his recommendation?
That they don't do it.
Well, the other thought is, if one does it and you open up the can, that would be my, because there's obviously bigger parcels there that are being unused and have extra room. Not that I wanna.
Well, and the other issue is.
Create hardship, but.
Hold on, Ty.
Yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mike. And you got our TPW guys going out there cleaning up the road every once in a while when it gets too muddy.
Right.
Well, I mean, there's a simple solution for that. You simply tell them that they have to sweep the road every third day, and they have to put up fencing around it.
Who enforces that?
As far as the construction equipment not being stored in Long Meadow, that's not accurate, because if you drive up and down Converse Street, they've lined the road with all different construction equipment.
That's correct.
Yep. Two issues. One, if there's dirt and stuff in the road, that's a violation of the stormwater management bylaw, which is the purview of DPW, not of this board. So DPW can go after them for stormwater management issues on, get the silt in the road. Secondly, though, under industrial uses in the industrial garden park, all industrial uses are permitted except those listed in Section 3.01, which is as not. No use shall be permitted which would be detrimental or offensive or tend to reduce property values in the same or adjoining districts by reason of dirt, odor, fumes, smoke, gas, sewage, refuse, noise, excessive vibration, et cetera. So, you know, one could say that the dirt would be detrimental, particularly in the industrial garden park.
If I could go out on a limb here, I think of the situation where it was reversed and they were doing work in East Long Meadow, I don't think Long Meadow would be keen on us keeping our stuff there, you know, from a fairness point of view. So I would probably, I think it best interest of the town and its residents would probably see this is not a good idea.
I would pretty much agree with that because it's, it's industrial garden park. It's not just straight industry. You know, it's not like the heavy equipment guys, the bobble guys down on, you know.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, our industrial zone is in the middle of town.
Yeah.
Truthfully, if I had soil storage somewhere, I would rather an industrial garden on the very edge of town instead of the middle of our town. So, the industry zone in the industrial garden park, I don't see.
Well, my understanding is the whole purpose of the industrial garden park was to have light industry that looks good. You know, and yeah, when you're actually constructing something there, you're gonna have some disruption. But to rent it out as construction storage, there are other places that that could be done in town that are industrial, that are not visible from the street, okay? And that would be much more appropriate.
Do it right in the middle of town.
Well, they can do it all by.
Put it right in there.
Yeah. No, but there's a construction company just to the west of the old Carlin in the back. It's got tons of room. They could rent some of the space down on the heavy equipment dealer if they wanted to store heavy equipment.
I would think their thought was, and again, I don't mean to speak for the construction company, but to try and keep it as close to where they're actually doing their work.
I understand that, but I also agree that, I don't think it's appropriate for the industrial garden park, and I wouldn't want to set a precedent on it.
So is there a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to approve it, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
That fails order one. We will notify Go Graphics that it's not allowed use, and they will have to talk to the construction company about removing everything. We have a request for signage.
There we go.
Request for signage, visual changes, 100 Shaker Road.
I've attached the minutes in the decision that you all made before. I sent them all to you, so you saw them, just to remind you.
Town of East Long Metal sign permit application dated April 27, 2017. Name of business and address is Visual Changes 100 Shaker Road, East Long Metal. Business owner's name and address is Mark.
Maruka.
Maruka. Property owner's name and address is Dr. Thomas Chesen. Contact person and telephone number is Barbara Solini, excuse me. Square footage of the proposed sign is 56 square feet, it's nine by seven. It is attached to the building, no projections. Distance from top of sign is zero. It is a permanent sign. It is illuminated. Number of existing signs is two. Total square footage of existing signs is 9.33 square feet. Number of proposed signs is one. Total square feet of proposed sign is nine by seven, which is 56 square feet. Total square foot of proposed and existing signs is 65.3. And the application's been signed. The estimated cost is $5,000.
You have to read that, too.
Town of East Long Metal Planning Board regarding 100 Shaker Road Visual Changes Sign Installations. Per request of the planning board, a field inspection was conducted to determine the signs located on the front elevation of the building and the front ground sign. The ground sign was measured having a total of 4.33 square feet. Due to the height restriction, the front elevation sign measures approximately five feet wide, two and a half feet in height, giving a total of 12.5 square feet. Both totals come to 16.83 square feet. This does not include the blank space under the front elevation sign of the building. The sign located on the left elevation of the building that was installed without proper approval and without a sign permit approximately measured, excuse me, 10 feet wide and eight feet in height. Measurements were determined to the best of my ability due to the height of the sign installation. Signed, Kevin Duquette, Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer.
I had asked Robin to see if Kevin would go out and take a look at the sign to see the size of it. I know they've stated nine by seven, which is actually 63 square feet, whereas the application says 56. I think that was just a math error, but it's definitely larger than it's supposed to be. It's on the side of the building where it's not allowed to be.
Is there entrance on the side?
No.
No, there's no entrance under it. And the sign on the front of the building was already previously approved, and then this one was put on, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there any further discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving it? All those opposed?
Nay.
And it is 6:15?
Should I go invite them in?
Thank you. No, I don't think so, actually. We have a 6:15 appointment. It's a continuation of a public hearing for Bentley's Bistro, 53 North Main Street. I would like to open it up and invite you forward. It doesn't seem like they're rushing out there.
Come on up.
How are you? How are you? Okay, we've already read the notice at the last meeting. Would you like to go through real quick and let us know what you would like to do?
Sure. For the record, my name is Larry Levine, attorney for Miss LLC, doing business as Bentley's Bistro at, what's my address, Joe?
53 North.
53 North Main in East Long Meadow. We're here to ask an amendment to the special permit to change the operating hours Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM through 11:00 PM.
It's 12, Wednesdays and one Thursday, Friday.
Wait, 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 wait.
Eleven to 12, Sunday through, we want to change that to 8:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, Sunday through and including Wednesday. And Thursday and Friday, change that to 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM. And then Saturday and Sunday, to change that from 8:00 AM, I'm sorry, we already did Sunday. Saturday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM as well.
You're reading the liquor license.
Yes.
So, same thing.
So, seven days.
Seven days a week is 8:00 AM.
It should be. It should, it should.
Yes.
And are any of the closing hours changing?
Closing hours will change, no. Closing hours are not changing.
That's the only option.
And furthermore, to allow the dispensing of alcohol on Saturdays and Sundays from 10:00 AM until closing.
That's not us.
That's not us.
I know that, I'm just, I just want you to be fully open and educated.
Okay.
I know that.
You want to be open from 10.
No, no. No, no, no. Every day 8:00 AM.
Yeah.
Every single day.
And all the closing hours.
And all the closing hours remain the same. Yes.
Eight o'clock?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought you just said 10.
No, that's dispensing of alcohol.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And really for information purposes.
Oh, all right, okay. So 8:00 AM all the way across the board?
Straight across the board. So, we're not looking to extend hours in the evening, just extend them until the morning, 8:00 AM.
Yes, and it's become economically feasible and beneficial that they be open for breakfast. And also there's a, large gatherings for Sunday for brunches. I have with me Joe Garcia, one of the newest, the newest principal of the LLC. And behind me are Lisa and Vinnie Santinello, other principals, as well as Christopher Fry, who's the manager. And I've questioned all of them, and they've been running a good ship. I know of no offenses that have drawn police or complaints from the neighborhood. I think it's a reasonable request, and that's why we're here.
Okay, being a public hearing, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Would anyone like to speak for this? Against this? Seeing none, let's bring this right back to the board. Do we have any comments from the board? Any questions?
No, I think it's a great idea to open early for brunch on Saturdays and Sundays.
Yep.
You know, maybe do a Mother's Day brunch, things of that nature. It would be nice.
It's another breakfast place, and you know, there's nothing wrong with that. Different from the other breakfast places in town.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yes.
Little different ambiance.
Little different.
Yeah, a little different. I think better.
Actually, it's true, we have a lot of breakfast places closed on Sunday right now.
That's right.
That's true.
I have no problem.
Ty, any thoughts?
I know, I'm good with this.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And would there be a motion?
Make a motion to approve the amendment to the special permit to allow them to open up at 8:00 AM dealing.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with the breakfast.
Thank you.
This is not mine. No. Okay, we've done Go Graphics, we've done the signage, we have an A and R for Cynthia and Kevin Drenth, 351 Summers Road.
Of course.
I have to recuse myself from this, so George, if you would take over.
Okay. Ty, do you have something to read?
I will, you have something for me to read?
It's right there. Wait a minute. George, can you hand it to her?
Thank you.
It's basically just, it's not, it's just an A and R, he really doesn't.
This is Summers Road, that's not the Summers Road one. That's the North Main Street one.
These are.
The North Main Street, I thought.
That's North Main Street.
In her hand is Summers Road.
This is Summers Road.
Yeah, yeah.
That's North Main Street.
It's North Main Street.
This is North Main.
Yeah.
This is our North Main.
Okay, let's get it on with the, put that, put that, put that here and take that one.
We're doing Summers Road, we're doing Summers Road first.
Okay, application for endorsement of plan, believe not to be required. The applicant is Cindy Demash. I can't read her writing, can you tell me what this says?
Just the plan, say, does the plan have a name on it?
The plan is Cynthia M. Drenthy?
Okay.
Thank you.
Cynthia Drenthy, 351 Summers Road, phone number is listed here. Name of owner is the same. Name of engineer and surveyor is Smith Associates Surveyors, Inc. The address is 468 Baldwin Street. Or is that 46B? Could be either one. Looks like, maybe it's B, 46B.
Oh, that's, that's where Smith Associates is.
That's the address of the engineers.
On Baldwin Street.
Yeah.
It's a property, deed of property recorded in Hampton County Registry of Deeds showing ownership is attached here, too. Book number 14376, page 498. Number of existing lots is two. Area of existing lots, lot or lots, 18,042 square feet. Frontage of existing lots and lots is 111 and a half feet. Number of proposed lots is one. Minimum frontage proposed lots is 111 and a half. Area proposed lots is 18,042 square feet. Required frontage is located on Summers Road. Said street or byway is an accepted way. Said lot is proposed, is a proposed lot, conveyance or other instrument which adds to or takes away from or changes the size or shape of lots such that no lot affected is left without required frontage. The existing assessor's map and lot number for lot identification is map 53, lot 48-1. The application's been signed, and there is a phone number listed here.
I think that's enough.
Okay, thank you. So what exactly are we, is being done?
Currently, there's a property line that goes where the dotted line is.
Okay.
Okay, they own both parcels, and they want to combine them into a single parcel that will be less non-conforming.
Oh, so the whole thing will become one lot?
This whole, just this one. That's somebody else.
They own, they own this strip?
I gotcha.
And this strip.
Basically taking a line out.
So, yeah, they're actually increasing their conformity from their side yard setbacks.
Exactly.
They're looking to add onto their house, so they need to be able to.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to endorse.
I will second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's endorsed.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome. George, you're gonna have to sign that.
Yep.
After, after the meeting.
Yep, the next one, we have an A and R for 576 North Main Street.
You really don't need to read that in.
No, we don't have to read it in. But it was fun hearing Ty read it.
Why, why was that so fun, Rob? Yeah, you gotta look at the handwriting of some of these things here.
I, I mean, I've been saying for a long time.
I still don't know why we haven't gone to electronic.
It should be printed, it should be typed, it should be something other than handwritten.
They are electronic, they don't, they choose not to do them.
Well, well, maybe we should insist.
Require them to.
Because almost every meeting, I'm asking, does anyone know what this word could possibly be because the handwriting is horrible.
I agree, that's, that's a policy.
In this day and age, it should be.
It definitely should be.
That's a policy issue that we can take up, but later.
So, existing, if I'm correct, the property line is here, and they want them to go back here to where the zone line is, basically. So it'll actually increase parcel A, decrease parcel B, but parcel B is listed as not a buildable lot. It is on an undeveloped road, so this isn't basically dividing it into two buildable lots. So it is allowed under an A and R. Is there any thoughts or comments?
Just a quick question, which building is this?
This is the animal hospital, and this is the.
Directly across from.
This is Karma Hair Salon.
You said the old machine shop there?
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Right across from Cali for that.
Gotcha. I'll make a motion to endorse.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any further discussion?
No, the applicant understands it's not a building lot, so until they develop and pave morning side road, they can't really do anything back there.
Right.
And that's fine.
Great, have an emotion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I will endorse it after the meeting.
You're gonna have to go with it.
Oh, no, I can see the handwriting all over the place.
Yes, and then you have to add this because this is my addition to it, but I hope you can read my writing.
I'd like you to help me if I need to get to that point.
All right.
Under administrative issues, Power Queen Fitness, 45 Baldwin Street Extension, request for parking lot.
And we, the planning board already granted an extension.
Yes, they had sent us a request. They had the house to remove, and with the waiting room stuff, they asked for a 30-day extension to put the parking lot in, and I believe they're asking for additional time. Ty?
Once again, in 2017, don't you think we should be typing nowadays?
I don't think so.
Town of East Long Metal Planning Department, attention, Robin McDonald, dated May 2nd, which is today. Subject 45 Baldwin Street. Dear Robin, as you are aware, both Power Queen Fitness and McMahon family have been working with various town departments on our project to rebuild the inside of 45 Baldwin Street and construct a parking lot on the site. Power Queen has been granted a 30-day temporary paving permit, though through no fault, is that, is that supposed to be paving?
Parking.
Parking. Excuse me. Parking permit, through no fault of anyone, the permitted process for the parking lot is taking longer than expected. Now, the East Long Metal Fire Department has asked it, before the house is torn down, can they use it as a training site? Obviously, we want to work with the town in the same way it helps down the road. Okay? On behalf of the Power Queen and McMahon family, I am recusing, I'm requesting an additional 90-day temporary parking permit. Thank you in advance for your continued. Thank you in advance for your continued cooperation. Gary S. McMahon, 45 Baldwin Street.
When this first came to the board, they said that they needed an extension because the, the paving plans were closed. And then I spoke with Ralph, and he and Tom Wilson spoke, and apparently it was about Bay State Gas, and so.
Columbia.
Then I received the, well, they're now Columbia. I received the letter from Mr. McMahon, and so I called Paul Morissette. And Paul called Mr. McMahon, and this is the latest, right here.
Okay. Bay State Gas, letter received, T. Wilson to drain septic system, and then E.L. Fire Department will use site to drain within next two weeks, and then house will be demolished.
Yep.
So, they're still looking for an extension of time.
Yeah, they are.
Because the 30 days is just about up. I think what it is, is they're trying to work with the town. The gas company hadn't sent in a letter basically saying, hey, everything's clear, you can demolish it, I guess now they've proceeded. I think the fire department wants to use it a little bit, so.
We'll use it for training, but they'll be in and out of there in two days.
I've been in a position where a house was donated to the East Long Meadow Fire Department. They were very, very grateful because they don't have a lot of those opportunities in East Long Meadow to do that, so I think that's a good cause.
Where is it that you live? I can give them that.
Well, it wasn't my house, it was through business.
Yeah, no, and I.
It was very helpful and beneficial to them.
Paul verified everything today, so.
I'll make a motion to grant the extension.
For how long? For how long are we going to?
90 days.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I just have a couple of things, if I can, Ralph.
Okay.
Cookie Torres called me today, and she is, she's the.
Casa.
Casa breakfast place, that there was problem with the parking and all that. She has hired Gary Weiner, and she has hired Michael Smith, and they're getting a parking plan together.
Awesome. For the adjacent lot?
Right, and she, she was upset because she said that she sends her staff out every day to clean up any trash that the customers have left, to make sure that people aren't parking on both sides of the street, and they've been asked to move their cars if she finds them on both sides of the street. And she said that she also drove up and down the street and did not see any lawns that were damaged as the complaint was received. So she just felt bad because she works very hard to keep her place clean. She's an awesome businesswoman, she, she really gives me a kick, you know, Cookie. But she just wanted me to make sure, and I, I assured her that I would let the board know that she's doing everything she can.
Good, good to hear.
That's awesome.
The building inspector has been very busy with cease and desists. I'm not sure whether any.
He's been one of those a long time.
Oh, there's a post.
Well, that's good that he's doing it.
I'm not sure whether you realize that the town hall parking lot by the library on the 22nd of April was all cordoned off, and there were business tables out there and a big shredding, yeah. It was ravenous reality, he decided that he was going to do something for his customers without permission from anyone. So the safety officers were not happy with that. DPW was not happy with that, the library wasn't happy with that, so, right.
So it was taken care of.
So, yeah, Kevin went over and.
Wait, 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 let me think this through. You need to tell me, someone came over to public property.
Yes.
Fenced it off and used it for their own personal purposes.
Absolutely.
Without any permission whatsoever.
Absolutely.
That's bold.
I like that.
Yeah. That's a basic statement.
Takes months.
It's making a statement, all right.
It is, also a violation of the.
A statement that I don't think they'll make again.
Statement that I don't, I think it's not a statement you want to be making.
No, and Mr. Falcone was upset about that, so.
I'm sure.
Yeah, so there was that, and Kibby wrote, there was a complaint with regard to a junk yard. So he sent a cease and desist, 281 Maple Street, we had received complaints that the buffer area that was supposed to be between the doctor's office and the residential districts was supposed to be kept up, and it has not been, and so he sent a letter of violation to them. Let me see, 406 to 436 North Main Street, he went to the shopping center, and he took pictures of all the illegal signs.
Well, I don't think the truck was necessarily illegal, was it?
Yes.
How so? On the vehicle?
Because it's a sign, and he put it there and left it there.
He moves it all the time, then.
Well, only after he got a phone call, so, but all the.
There were a lot of signs.
Sandwich signs.
Which I think is great.
He took care of the whole plaza. Did a clean sweep?
And this is only part of.
Not making many friends, is he?
He's, he's a great guy, he's, he's doing an awesome job, you all should be really proud and glad that he's working for the town.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Minutes.
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to look through them and send down their corrections?
Yes, April 18 and April 4.
Let's start with.
Do you want to? We're going to do that.
She had you sign me, so I don't know why.
I don't know.
Are you kidding me? I only missed one meeting months ago, and it's still.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Any further discussion?
I'm here.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, April 18.
We had this conversation last meeting.
Is there any further discussion on April 18? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Robin, did you have any other administrative issues?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'd just like to announce that I have submitted my letter of resignation. I've asked that Friday be my last official day, and this will be my last meeting. So with that being said, I ask that a reorganization of the planning board be put on for tonight, and I would entertain motions for chairman, vice chair, and clerk.
All right, if I may, I've also put a letter of resignation in, I'll be done at the end of May, so I have one more meeting, and I'm done as well, so.
That being said, then we have at this time three members left, so which one would like to be which?
I would make a motion to make George the chairperson.
I would second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At that point, George, then you are now the chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a nomination for the position of vice chair?
I'll nominate Deb.
Then I would second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would like to make a motion to have Tide continue as clerk then.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations on all of you. The first four-year term as clerk. The job would go better if you would give, give me handwriting I could read.
Well, I'm going to put that on as administrative issue for the next meeting that we.
I think that's a great idea.
I've made that comment before, just because.
I'm like.
Yes. And they're all online, but people, a lot of them say they don't have computers, I don't think so.
Oh, come on, they're running.
No, but let George finish, let George finish.
Okay. For the next meeting, since it's out on the agenda tonight, for the next meeting under administrative issues, I want to put a, a vote on not accepting handwritten applications from that, from that point forward.
I would agree with that, I think we should post that slightly to like the.
There are, there are computers in the library, okay, if, you know, there are computers all over the place, they can even check out computers from the library now.
Half the applications are reading our home offices with computers.
I know, I know, so it, it makes no sense, and in addition, it is, it leads to inaccuracies because if you can't read it, then you don't know what's actually intended. So I suggest we vote on that at the next meeting as a policy not to accept handwritten applications. And, but if people know that, they will do it.
Can I interject and ask a question here? Are our forms online strictly a PDF, or are they Word files, too, that they can be?
No, they're PDFs, or.
They're, they're fillable PDFs, though.
They're fillable PDFs? Okay. So right now, at this instant, people.
I think Denise has to make that decision. The only thing that the planning board can do is statutory.
No, the planning board can write their own rules.
Recommend.
They can write their own rules and regulations. We, we can, we can set our own method of operating.
All right, well, I.